Oh.
Well, you're right on the water. This isn't.
Paul, how's the, how's the commuting and, and sort of staying up here and all that stuff? How's that going?
Truthfully, if I wasn't staying up here for next week, I wouldn't be able to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just a bear of a ride. I think my shortest one morning was like an hour and fifteen. And the longest was like two fifteen, two twenty.
Oh, really? Wow. Yeah, that's a long.
But in that much time, I would hope to be like in New York or.
Yeah, to Connecticut.
Yeah.
Oh, it's, yeah, it's, that's an awful.
Pam is rejoining as a panelist so that she'll be able to, so she'll be here shortly.
I'm here.
Hey, Pam.
Hi, how, how's everybody?
Good. How are you?
Wonderful time here.
I'm sure I'm see myself on that large screen. I'm sorry about that, guys.
All right.
Bob joined the wrong meeting. I'm just gonna ping him.
And Rich is also remote, Pam.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what. I'm assuming my camera's not working, but I. I can hear everybody and see everybody.
Goes, you're coming in loud and clear.
You have a lovely font.
Yeah, good. And Erica, when we, uh, well, I, I guess we'll, we'll talk about that later, but. You can share, you can share your screen, right, with different documents and so forth? Is that true?
Yep.
Okay.
So just let me know when Bob's in the meeting and we can jump in.
Yeah, my computer's just giving me a hard time, but I think it's a personal. Are you here for a minute? Well, no, we're just going executive after, but I think I should be fine. Honestly, Pam, he might be a minute. I don't know if you want to call to order or wait for Bob?
Um, well, the only thing is I think Bob was the one who was going to provide the GM search committee update, so.
I, I could do that.
Oh.
That's Bob too. Yeah, you and Bob.
I mean.
Okay, okay. All right, uh, so it being five oh three on October second, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Uh, I believe we're gonna forego public comment from now, but of course, if anything comes up, um, you know, let us know. Um, Erica and Aaron, um, so we'll move right into the committee updates. So we'll start with the GM search committee. Ray.
The GM search committee, uh, we've received about thirty-six applications. Uh, we've rated them against the. Requirements that we had set out in terms of the specifications, um, skills, education, uh, experience. And we narrowed that down to a subset. Uh, we did a more critical evaluation, uh, ranking each of those candidates against that criteria. Uh, and then, uh, narrowed that down to about six candidates that we interviewed. Uh, preliminary interviews, uh, they responded to standard set of questions. And, uh, we are now close to recommending to the, to the general board, uh, a slate of candidates that we'd like to, uh, move forward.
Excellent. Um, do you have a anticipated, uh, or an ideal schedule for sharing that with the board? Um, and determining the, uh, schedule for kind of final interviews?
Um, we have been working, yeah, it's, i- in the next week or so, we're ready to recommend to the, to the board and begin. Uh, announcing when that, the. Board would have open interviews with the candidates. We're, we're talking to the candidates and, and seeing their response. So, um, I, I don't have the actual dates that I'm, we can report out on, although I know we're, we're working with, uh, Susan to, to kind of get that scheduled. But we're mindful that, uh, we want to try to get, um, someone selected promptly so that we can move forward. But, um, I, I, I don't have the exact dates where.
Okay, um, Erica, do you happen to have the original dates, um, handy of like what our, what our aligned schedule was? Or is that something Susan might have?
I'm just gonna give Bob a card once again.
I, I do want to say as part of that process, us, while we're tracking that piece of information down. Um, that as a part of our review, we met with various groups of the RMLD. Staff and got their feedback in terms of, you know, what did they? What did they like? Uh, what values and qualities that they see, um, that we should be mindful of in, in our GM search? And we want to say that has been very helpful to us. Uh, we're very mindful of their feedback. Uh, certainly, certainly I'm very mindful of it and we, we talk about those qualities. When the candidates have asked us, you know, what are we looking for? Uh, we pare it back. You know, we talked to the staff and these are the qualities we're looking for. So it, it's been very, very helpful, uh, to us in our search and it's been a. High in our minds in terms of those, those qualities.
And if I could add to it, when he says staff, that's both represented and non-represented types. So you had, you know, union folks and non-union folks being asked those questions.
Yeah, we, only that we broke down into manageable groups so that we could talk to groups separately, but yeah, it was across the board.
Yeah. Yeah, everybody was given an opportunity to weigh in.
Right.
You guys did a lot of work. I see a lot of meetings have been happening. Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you, Paul, for any help you've been providing.
I stayed out of the way.
Yeah. It's, it's excellent progress.
The endpoint, that, that, that's the one thing Paul has kept us, kept us on track with.
Always good, always good to have the end in mind. Yeah, absolutely. Um, thank you for the update and thank you, uh, agree. I concur with what, uh, Commissioner Talbot said in terms of, uh, uh, thanks for all the commitment. I know it's a lot of time and, and certainly appreciate folks who have thrown their hat into the ring, uh, for the, for the role as well. Really exciting to hear. Um, I, I will do a double check, but I, I think our objective, um, is, is to really get through the interview process in the month of October. Um, you know, to allow us time for any, you know, selection deliberation and contract negotiation. So that we can, you know, kind of secure our plan before the holidays. So, um, would be, would be excellent if we keep our focus on, you know, I, I know Erica's working diligently to make sure we have. Uh, meeting times of slotted and available, um, let's, let's work towards getting those on the calendar, um, as quickly as we can. Um, and we can certainly slot in candidate names, um, on those available, available slots, um, but I know things get busy. So let's try to get that scheduled as quickly as we can.
Okay, Bob's in. Oh, perfect. All right. Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
He might have some additional information, which is why I just wanted him to pop on.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Bobby there?
Hold on, he's rejoining as a panelist so that he can talk.
Okay.
Here, now.
Yes.
Hi.
Yes.
Joining. Ray just gave us a quick update in terms of kind of the, the candidate, um, uh, process, uh, number of candidates. And the fact that you're very close to making a recommendation on the, the three finalists. Um, and we were just talking a little bit about the timeline, uh, and the objective of getting, um, uh, the meeting, the, uh, final interview time slots on the calendar. So that we can ensure we get through that process by the end of October. Um, do you want to add anything to?
Yeah.
Uh, Ray also, sorry, Ray also did talk about the, um, importance of gathering feedback from the RMLD, uh, staff and, and how important that was to incorporate.
It was, it was very, very critical. Yes, uh, you know, for the needs and the wants. Yes, we, 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 we have three finalists, so we are moving forward with the process. Um, now we're at the point where we will be scheduling. An interview at both the convenience of the board and the, and, and those three finalists. So, oh, oh, that, that's what we need to do is to put out some dates, multiple dates. So that, um, we, we can, uh, get that done and maybe if we get a couple of timeframes. Um, so that way, you know, if one person can't make it on one night, you know, we, we, I, I would suggest to put out a couple of times for, for that. And then we can, uh, provide those to Susan and then Susan can then, uh, work back with the candidates to get a night. I would prefer to have all three in one night. That would be my preference, whether or not with that, that's, uh, you know, we're, we're able to, uh, you know, get that in with everybody in our timeframe. That's good. So what, um, so we are officially ready to go. Um, so now it's a matter of scheduling. Um, I, unfortunately, I am away Monday through Thursday next week. And the following week I am away Monday through Wednesday. Um, so I am very limited on time on the, the following two weeks to be present.
Okay, I, I think Erica, do you have all of that schedule information? I know you're working on just general board schedule over the next couple of months.
Five seventy.
Yeah, I just have to join.
Or I can just join. Um, yeah, so I have it up right now on. Quickly, just the restrictions, just to see if these are still the same. So I have Paul cannot do an in-person meeting from October twenty-third to the first week of November. So if Paul, if the plan is for Paul to be in person at the interviews, um, it would have to be before October twenty-second or after the first week of November. Um. Rich, I have you unavailable starting Wednesdays in November. Bob, I have you unavailable on Thursdays. There is a.
Yeah, Erica, I, I will not be available the sixth through the ninth. Nor the thirteenth through the fifteenth.
Would you be available on October sixteenth?
I, I, yes, I can be.
Okay, so it looks, it, it seems like we're at like October sixteenth and maybe October twentieth, twenty-first. As potential dates.
In, in, in the tw- in the twenty-second, right? Because we could, we could just. Use that meeting.
Yeah.
So the twenty, so back to the twenty-second, um, Paul will not be here, is unavailable that day. Um, at the very least, as far as a board meeting goes, we need to get a bid approved. So I do have that meeting as still running. Um, again, it's between you and Paul if you want Paul in person for that. But if, um, so if you do want Paul in person, October twenty-second will not work for interviews. But I would still like to have a board meeting to get that boiler bid approved.
If, if, if it's, if it's just a bid approval on the twenty-second, we, that could take literally two minutes, right? So, um.
And unless there's some rules around, um, uh, Paul needing to be there, I think we'd be okay having a representative. From procurement or otherwise. On the twenty-second. Any objections?
Um, I, I'm, I'm not available on the twenty-second.
So I would assume then that is just gonna be a bid meeting and not an interview meeting. It's kind of what I'm going for.
Okay.
Um.
But I am available on our original twenty, on the fifteenth. Um, wait, maybe I am available on the twenty-second. Let me see.
So as far as just the bid goes, um, it will not be ready in time for anything before the twenty-second because they have to do the analysis, et cetera. But, um, we do just want to get it done, which is why I'm thinking even a quick Zoom meeting like the last one we did a bid, just to get that on boiler ordered to heat station one.
Okay.
Okay, so that, it sounds fine for October twenty-second to at least target the bid approval. And then I just realized I'm traveling the twentieth and twenty-first, so, um, I don't, it, it, October sixteenth, can I just re, is that an option for folks? And I think.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, I know Thursdays are tough. Are they always tough for you beyond that, um, Bob? Like if we did the twenty-third?
Uh, so if we did. I could do the sixteenth to the twenty-third.
Okay.
And also the, i- in, in if it's, again, goes back to the twenty, twenty-first, but it sounds like you're traveling on those days, so that's not possible.
Yeah, unfortunately.
All right, that brings us, i- i- we even talk about the week of the twenty-seventh. Uh, twenty-eighth, um, uh, I, again, the Monday, Tuesday, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, I'm not available, but the twenty-ninth and thirtieth I am. Which is, that's a, that's a long way out from today, three weeks, but.
Yeah, it is.
And I want to be clear, you're, that would mean Paul will not be attending in person, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and, and unless we open up a Friday. Which.
No, I think, I think I, so yeah, sixteenth or seventeenth, you know, potentially if folks are willing to do a Friday or twenty-third, twenty-fourth. Potentially, so maybe we, we prioritize sixteenth and twenty-third as options and we check candidates' availability for those days. And if, um, if we can find one that works for all, we, we pick one, one of those two Thursdays. And it's just a long night, um, and Fridays as backups.
Yeah, or even the thirtieth possibly, right? Oh, no, that's Paul. Paul's not available then. That's right. Sorry.
Yeah, he wouldn't be available the twenty-third or twenty-fourth to be there in person anyway, um, uh, but it's. Uh, I think it also is really running late, um, so we want to try to prioritize closer to the middle of the month.
Thanks. I don't, I have to check, I'll have to check with open meeting law. Our building is closed on Friday, so I don't know if we can do an in-person meeting. I just would need to triple check that. How to go about that with open meeting law.
Okay. Um, all right, well, another reason to prioritize Thursday, October sixteenth or twenty-third.
We also can meet offsite, um, elsewhere.
So if the building is closed on the twenty-third, just because it's not open.
Twenty-fourth would be when it was closed. Twenty-third it should be open.
Or, I'm sorry, um, we, couldn't we open the doors for?
Yeah.
Oh, I would.
I would think so, yeah.
Think so.
Well, we'll take, we'll take the, like, the location offline again, like, I don't think it's, it's a paradise Friday anyway. So let's, let's, again, unless any objections, October sixteenth and twenty-third priority would be one of those two days, having everybody for in one evening. Um, with Fridays, those, that, those two weeks as backup.
Good.
Okay. Um, excellent. All right, so anything else on the search process?
Sorry, one more, Ken, you're probably gonna need two meetings, so we probably should book two because I don't know if you'll be ready to announce the same day you interview. And you'll have to announce in public.
Um, okay, we, so.
The seventeenth, that type of thing. If you did it twenty-third, you know, we could announce the next day if needed.
I thought last time we voted right on the spot, uh, the last meeting with, um.
That was an interim position. We.
Uh, I, with, with Greg, didn't we vote on the spot?
No, um, for the last GM one, you took a day.
We, we took a day.
Well, decent.
I don't, I, I think we could vote, I, I, I mean, that, my opinion, I think we could just vote that night. As long as we have a voting, voting procedure in place, um. And then, um. But I, 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 I get my, my opinion. I think we could vote that night.
Well, why don't we just do this? Let's, let's, let's set that as the objective. If we, the sooner we can start the process, the better. Um, let's all hold the sixteenth and the twenty-third evenings. Um, if, i- I think it would be helpful if we, if the search committee, um. We probably need a little bit more details on the process, so, you know, we're gonna need to align on questions, um, time amounts, order of interviews. What's happening with the candidates, uh, while the others are being interviewed, um, and then our voting process. Uh, so it's, it, we may need to just book those two and then, um, have our, our process review. And then decide if we need to have an additional day, uh, for the official, like, kind of vote deliberation or vote.
One more small, sorry.
Yep. Try to, I apologize.
Little log on the fire is just that even if we did it the same night, the vote is move to enter contract negotiations with X. That is, I think, the proper way to do it. And then, then there's gonna be, whether it's that night or probably another night is to have that executive session to hammer out any details. This segues with the upcoming, uh, second half of this meeting of making sure that we're all aligned on those details. And after that, it becomes a, a hire. Paul.
Yes, correct. And I think that's, that's part of why we're trying to make sure we get through the process. Um, and get the, the interview process done before end of October so that we leave ourselves, uh, space for those sessions.
Um, one, one thing, uh, Susan did mention was, we, we have, we have questions, we have, um, that were created. Um, we've, we've, uh, went through a series of eight questions with each candidate. We approximately had an hour. You know, for the sake of this, we would have to say forty-five minutes, right? Three interviews at forty-five minutes with some transition. Last time we did a random draw of the three candidates, one, two, or three. Um, the other candidates weren't allowed to listen, um, to the in- interview from another, you know, they were on, on premise. But, uh, in an, in another room, not allowed to, to listen, um, to the other person's responses. Uh, so that was the mechanics of that. Um, I, you know, we could look at those, you know, distribute those eight questions, um, that we had. And if there's any desire to, um, expand or retract those, we, you know, we, we could, we could do that. But, you know, eight questions, you get, you know, basically five-minute intro, five minutes per question. And, and, and then some, some, and a, and a follow-up. We have to, we would have to have it, you know, stay on time with, you know, for respect for the other candidates and respect of total time. So.
Okay, yeah, so it sounds like, uh, maybe we can, uh, appropriately distribute those questions, um, to the board just for review. Um.
Yeah.
And then, uh, it sounds like the rest of the, the protocol is pretty well ironed out. So, um, it's essentially, we're talking about a three-hour meeting, um, one of those evenings. Um, with, with those time slots defined for candidates. So let's, uh, once the candidate list is available, um, for our HR team, have them reach out, um, and get their availability on October sixteenth or twenty-third. And then Erica, let us know, um, what the, uh, what the date looks like.
Perfect.
Uh, one, one suggest, could we start at five-thirty that night? So it would be a little bit earlier. We do like five-thirty, six-thirty, six-thirty, seven-thirty, seven-thirty, eight-thirty, some conclusion. Um. That would, you know, I'm, I'm, that, that time works. I don't know if that is available for everybody at five-thirty on that night. Well, either, either one.
That, that would work fine for me personally. If, does anybody have any issues with that?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Five-thirty. I'll be here. All right, seventeen-thirty it is.
Um. I know it's maybe a little bit late, but, um. It, if we wanted to review questions, could we, but I, I'm thinking I could probably do it next Wednesday. Like, if we want to do something five o'clock. Um. If, if that would. Give them to the board in an executive session that we have the questions, if there's any questions about it, um. Maybe we could do that. I, or, um, I think we have to, I, I believe we have to talk about the questions in public. If we're gonna talk about the questions, but maybe a, a, a meeting to go over them. Or if, if, we could always. Just schedule something for next Wednesday and then not use it. But if that, that might be. Time slot open.
So why don't we do this? Um, maybe the, uh. The search committee chair and the, um, HR, uh, lead could have a conversation about the best way to. Um, facilitate review of questions if that's possible. Um, and then we can, we can set up time if we need to, uh, Wednesday, the ninth is tough, or no, Wednesday, the eighth, that would be tough for me. But we can, we can figure something out. Um.
Okay.
And, you know, worst case, we receive the questions at the beginning of the meeting and maybe, uh, leave ten or fifteen minutes at the beginning of the que- the meeting. Just to have a final public board review, um, and make any last-minute edits to the questions before we jump into the interviews.
That's a good idea.
Okay. Okay, um, anything else on the selection process? Or search committee?
No, I just wanted to, I think, great, uh, reiterated the thanks to everybody that was involved and. Uh, to Susan and to Patty as well for the time commitment they put into that. So much appreciated.
Echo that, absolutely. Thank you very much to everyone. That's a lot of hours, a lot of effort. And I know everybody put, um, a very serious effort into that, um, and, and takes that responsibility seriously. So thank you all for that contribution.
I have a question. So what's gonna happen on the eighth? We're gonna review the questions?
So.
No.
Yeah, so, so I think on the eighth, what we're trying to do is we settle on the questions that we'll ask the candidates before the board. So that we are giving each candidate the same questions. And, and while we've had eight that we worked with at the pre-interview, we want to see if those are the same questions or we want to tweak them for the final. So it's just to.
So it's gonna be a big thing to talk about the questions.
Questions.
You're gonna have to candidate.
Yeah, on, on the eighth, yeah.
So that, do we pick a time for that?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear anything about a meeting on the eighth. I heard that there are eight questions that are, have been, um, compiled and recommended by the HR lead. And that, um, the chair of the so- search committee and the HR lead would have a conversation about those questions. And the best way to gather input from the board. And worst case is we just leave the first fifteen minutes of our interview meeting to discuss and finalize the questions before we jump into interviews.
All right, but this, we're not doing the eighth, but, but yes, it. The, the idea is we put forward questions that we'll use for each candidate.
The board will.
Yeah. The question is that we, I think the, the idea is not to have the questions necessarily be public until the night of the interview. Um, which is tricky, so. Um, we want to make sure we're following the right steps there. Okay, um, let's move to, uh, the contract committee. Rich, do you have an update?
Yeah, so the contract committee has met a few times. Um, our first meeting was essentially to review some existing contracts, uh, that. You know, we, we, yeah, we reviewed a few of them and we continued to do that kind of through the course of our, uh, meeting. Um, the most recent meeting, we, uh, brainstormed and eventually. Sort of distilled, uh, a few recommendations. And those are the recommendations that we're gonna talk about a little bit in executive session.
And can you share a little bit about the, um, process that you'd like to, uh, take from here in terms of the, the timeline of when we would have? A draft, um, contract ideally to share with a candidate or candidates?
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, the, you know, the timeline that we've just talked about, I think will work, uh, depending on, you know, the outcome of the executive session. Um, but essentially, I think we should be able to have a contract, uh, that the, the candidates could review, you know, before. Uh, probably not weeks before, but, you know, at least days before their open interview on the sixteenth or whatever day we, we're just talking about seventeen.
Okay, so our, just to confirm our goal would be to provide them with that draft to review before the interview.
Yeah.
Are we, are we giving them time to review it, uh, before we post names of interview candidates?
I don't know when the names would be posted, uh, but we would be able to give it to them by the sixteenth, at least that, you know, according to our current plan, we'd be able to do that.
So at a minimum, I think we would, and, and folks can correct me on this, but we would need to post their names, um, at least forty. So at a minimum, I think we would, and, and folks can correct me on this, but we would need to post their names um at least forty-eight hours in advance when we post the agenda for the meeting. So.
I think, I think so. I think that we would be able to have a contract for them by the fourteenth. For sure, if the availability is the twenty-third instead, October twenty-third, we would be able to have a contract ready for them on the twenty-first.
Okay, do, do we want to consider giving the, and again, this is a perfect world enough time, right? So understand there may be time constraints, but do we want to give them at least forty-eight hours with the contract before? Um, uh, just to, so they can confirm before their names are posted?
In an ideal world, yes. Uh. I mean, I, I think s- some of the process, w- we need to sort of talk about a little bit based on the recommendations that we're making, so. Um. Hopefully, we'd be able to, you know, hopefully, we'd be able to do it maybe twenty-four hours in advance. Of the, of their names being posted.
We have to post our names forty-eight hours before the meeting. See.
Yeah, so, so Pam's question is, can we give them the contract twenty-four hours before we post their names? And my answer is hopefully.
Can I ask a question of a stor- historians in the room, which might be Paul and Erica? In, in, I don't remember giving, not that we didn't, how that worked the last two times of. Did we give somebody a contract like we, Erica's shaking her head, no.
I don't believe so. I believe what happened was once the person, I do not think anyone saw. A draft contract before going into negotiating. I think that once you pick somebody, then the contract negotiations happened.
Yeah, that, that's my memory too, and I'm, I was here for the last two, thirteen years, so. I get, I get the spirit of this, but also. That's not what we did before. So, and I don't know that, although it's for executive session, I don't know anything at all, all that. Uh, you know.
Yeah, that's, and that's fine. I'm just trying to confirm what we want the process to be, um, because I, I, I thought that there had been other conversation at prior meetings. Maybe I'm not remembering correctly about. You know, giving candidates visibility to the contract before they go public. Um, so.
Originated from, but um it has, I've heard it, but it's not something that I said or that Rich said.
No, I, I, I said that. I, I, yes, and I, I was, but my perfect world scenario, if we had a contract ready. That then we hand that contract to somebody, they can um review it, and if there were certain items in there that they um. Did not, or, you know, didn't like, you know, at that, at that point. You know, that would be, we could have a, we, we could have a preliminary discussion as to whether or not they, they would continue.
But so two things about, two things about that, Bob. One is that we're kind of starting a contract negotiation before we've even. You know, and that seems a little awkward to me.
Yeah, it's very, very true, Da- David, so maybe it would just be. Um, uh, just a, here, here's, here's what we have as, you know, our, our contract. Right? And no negotiation, yeah, no negotiation, right? That's a very good point.
Certainly, that would be going above and beyond what we've done in the past, and I guess that's good to do. There, it does, you know, doing negotiations before you've said, we want to enter negotiations with you seems a little fraught to me. And, and also, there's always the option that, I mean, not that we've done this before at RMLD and. I, I don't, I don't think we would do this, but not everybody has an employment contract. I think even some GMs in this state, like, in some situations may not have one. Paul will correct me.
I'm not aware of any that would step into that call.
Sure, sure.
Other contract.
Understood, but I think there might be somewhere, like certainly ones where it's a town department, it's a different setup, and then there's a few like that.
Yeah, so Danvers is that way, Conker is that way, Hall is that way. I know Hall has, he has a contract. I don't know Danvers. And I think Conker did also, but I'm not certain.
And then Norwood is another one, which is part of the town.
Correct. I believe they have one. He has one.
Right. I mean, so, and again, to your point and to your reaction of alarm, it, yeah, probably nobody would, but there is that option. You can have a job without a. If anyway, not that that would, maybe that would be an absolute deal killer, but just to say, I mean, it's, it's a very nice thing to get and. Um, you know, I think everybody's reasonable. But I, I, promising that they're going to get to review and approve something before we enter negotiations, maybe we don't have to be doing that.
That almost feels like the cut before the whole.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, um, I, I mean, if, let's, let's keep it consistent um with, with prior years, um, our prior situations. Um, we are moving toward, with the assumption that they will have a contract. Um, and we can hold that contract to share with the selected candidate. For negotiations only after interview is complete.
I mean, I think so, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Most sense to make.
Yeah.
Okay, clear. So it sounds like then either October sixteenth or twenty-third would work for that purpose as well.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Uh, is there anything else from the contract drafting committee? Before we move to executive session?
No, not from me. Uh, ma- maybe just a quick report that the contract committee has been me uh and Dave and Vivek.
Thank you all for your extra time and effort on this. Um, it is much appreciated. Uh, would anyone like to read the motion to move us to executive session?
Oh, I'd love to read it.
Thank you, Ray.
Move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D. Exemption from the public records and open meeting requirements in certain instances. Under the purpose number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations. With non-union personnel in return to open meeting session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
Welcome.
Um, let's do a roll call.
Swanson, yes.
Talbot, I.
Reporter, I.
Did we lose Bob? Okay, Daskalakis, I, we might have lost Bob.
Yep, yep, I'm like.
Okay, thanks, Bob. All right, thank you all. We'll see you shortly.
See you on the other side.
Recording stopped.